Patriotic Commission in collaboration with the American Legion Post 133 Honor Guard. Please stand. Thank, thank you. Now I'd like to lead everyone in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again to the Patriotic Commission and the American Legion Post 133 Honor Guard. The organizational meeting is now called to order. For the invocation, I'd like to introduce Rabbi Jeffrey Glickman, Rabbi Emeritus of Temple Beth Halil here in South Windsor, and a former member of the South Windsertown Council.
Thank you. Some people have explained politics by looking at the etymology. Poly means many, ticks are blood-sucking vermin. But they're really wrong. They're, it might be funny, but it's really, really wrong. Politics is not something that should be made fun of. Politics is a source of salvation for our community, wherever our community is. Politics means the heartfelt discussion and sometimes argumentation of different beliefs for the good of the community. A lot of good comes from that. It's the way we accomplish things that no one of us could do by ourselves. It's what paves roads and educates our populace and creates an environment of safety. It's confused with the word partisan. Partisan means the only way I win is if you lose. Partisan means we are the good and they are evil. Partisanship doesn't really have a place here. For a politician, I was told, and I believe this, that the most patriotic thing you can do is to run for office, any office, as long as you do it as a politician and not as a partisan. As long as you do it for the community and not for yourself, it is highly honorable. I have been in this chair. I can say in this town, we are so blessed to have people working many behind the scenes to fill this office, to fill the sewer department, the parks and wrecks, the schools, police, fire, who are excellent people. You have an excellent team to work with. That's a blessing. I now stand not as an elected official, but as we, the people. And I turn to our newly-elected officials and I say, "We, the people, need you to hold firm to your beliefs as to what is good for this community and to articulate them and sometimes to argue them in a heated manner, but to stick by them. But we, the people, need you to listen. We, the need, we, the people, need you to hold on to this and give up that and hold on to this and give up that. We need you to do that. We need you to set aside partisanship and be the politician in the highest sense of the word. If you do, I will ask God, please, to enable the trust of this community to rest in you. Because that's how we thrive. May God help us through our leaders to create a community which is a wonderful South Windsor, a wonderful place to live and to thrive. May it be God's blessing."
Thank you. All right. Will the newly-elected town councilors please come forward as I call your name to take the oath? Richard M. Balboni Jr., sworn in earlier, Steve Cordero, Audrey Delnecky, Maura Fitzgerald, Stephen King Jr., Mike Ulet, Andy Paterna, Elizabeth Pendleton, and Craig Zimmerman. I'm going to ask you all to please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as town councilors for the town of South Windsor to the best of your ability? So help you God. Congratulations. Counselors, are there any nominations for mayor for a term of office ending November 8th, 2027, or until a successor is chosen and seated?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Craig Zimmerman as mayor for a term ending November 8th, 2027, or until a successor is chosen and seated.
I'd like to second that motion.
Are there any further nominations? Seeing none, nominations are now closed. All those in favor of electing Craig Zimmerman as mayor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. I hereby declare Craig Zimmerman duly-elected mayor of South Windsor. Congratulations.
So I'm happy to ask for nominations for deputy mayor. Would anybody like to make a motion? Counselor King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we nominate Andy Paterna as deputy mayor for a term of office ending November 8th, 2027, or until a successor is chosen and seated.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you.
Okay, item number seven. Counselor Fitzgerald, setting a time and place for the next regular council meeting?
Sorry. Be it resolved that the next regular meeting of the South Windsertown Council be set for Monday, November 17th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsertown Hall, and the previous council schedule of regular meetings be adopted pending council approval of permanent rules and procedures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yep, thank you, Counselor King. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Passage unanimously, thank you. Item number eight, Counselor King, adoption of rules and procedures for the town council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move that it be resolved that the rules and procedures of the previous council be adopted as this council's rules, including the method for the calling of special meetings.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Manu Skakko, just a question. We're about to vote. If we wanted to make changes to that, we vote today, do, if we wanted to form a committee, do we do that today, or is that...?
I would suggest maybe if you wanted to form a committee to do a review, there is a process for doing that within the rules and procedures that we probably could start that process at your next regular scheduled council meeting, not today.
Got it. Okay, thank you. All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Passage unanimously, thank you. Going to turn back to the town clerk.
All right. At this time, I would like to call forward the following elected officials. The Board of Selectmen, Christopher Boye. Matthew D. Mitchell. And Robin, Robin Packie Pendleton. All right. Will you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as Board of Selectmen for the town of South Windsor to the best of your abilities? So help you God. Congratulations. Congratulations. Town Treasurer, Rose Maturro. Will you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as town treasurer for the town of South Windsor to the best of your ability? So help you God. Congratulations. Board of Education, Stephen Armstrong. John Caldwell. Genevieve Corsi. Paul Mackey. Lisa M. Minnealy. Mitchell Marks. Matthew Nettles. Nima T. Shaw. Sierra J. Yanaway. I'd like to ask you all to please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as Board of Education members to the best of your ability? So help you God. Congratulations. Planning and zoning commissioners, Mark Abrahamson. Patrick Kupchunis. Cesar Lopez. Ryan Welsh. I'd like to ask you all to please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as planning and zoning commissioners for the town of South Windsor to the best of your ability? So help you God. Congratulations. Last but not least, constables, Sandra C. Jeskey. Zanab Khan. Jay Murtha, sworn in earlier. John Sandberg. And Joan Walsh. Sworn in earlier today. All right. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as constables for the town of South Windsor to the best of your abilities? So help you God. Congratulations.
Okay, now I just have a, a few remarks tonight. On behalf of the entire town council, let me first thank Rabbi Glickman for his thought-provoking, inspirational, and timely invocation, the American Legion Post 133 Honor Guard for presenting the colors prior to the start of this meeting, and the town clerk, Bonnie Armstrong, for running the first part of this meeting. Thank you all. So before proceeding any further, I just wanted to address, I'm going to call it the proverbial elephant in the room. Every election, including last week, thousands of people in our community went to the polls with faith in a simple moral promise that every vote counts. It's a cornerstone of our democracy and the foundation of public trust. As many of you know, the final results, who actually was elected and gets to...
With all, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, if we could please turn that phone off while the mayor is giving his remarks, please.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Who actually was elected and get to fulfill their responsibilities here in South Windsor is under dispute and will be decided through the court system. Therefore, tonight's not the right time for any further comments on this topic. Putting this issue aside, it's my great honor, and I'm going to repeat that, it's my great honor to congratulate all of the other elected officials here tonight. I'm very fortunate, very fortunate, to be working with such an experienced town council, with four former mayors or deputy mayors, including former mayor Andy Paterna, who I'm lucky enough to have as my deputy mayor. Special shout-out to my special friends elected to the Board of Education. Tonight's a special night for both the elected officials, their families, and everyone involved in the election process. Please join me in thanking our registrars, staff, and volunteers who all worked so hard through both early and election day voting. They did a phenomenal job. As one of the leaders on the Board of Education for 15 years and for local baseball and basketball programs for almost 50 years, I've tried to stay out of the spotlight, to work hard, do what's right, treat people like I'd like to be treated, and be more interested in the result than who gets credit. While I understand that attending and leading large public meetings like this tonight comes with being mayor, I also know that most of what this town council accomplishes will be incremental and due to building relationships and trust. It is, it's a true honor to serve as mayor of this community that I've called home for so many years, and I am grateful for the trust placed in me to help lead South Windsor forward. During the campaign, among other things, I pledged to do the following. Encourage all of our leaders and residents to work together and respect all of our neighbors, including those people with different opinions. Bring my Board of Ed experience, support, and leadership to town-wide budget and planning decisions. To find solutions to our increasing town needs while understanding and respecting the effect of spending and taxes. As your new mayor, let me add a few other commitments. While as mayor, I have some additional responsibilities and duties for both our charter and state law. In many other ways, I'm just one of the nine elected councilors. I firmly believe that individuals working alone can only make headlines, while a team or group of people working together can accomplish just about anything. We all need to be accountable. If I make a mistake, you'll get an explanation as soon as possible from me and an apology if appropriate. We need to continue to move this town forward. While everyone may not agree with all the changes we propose, please know that like you, we all love this town and only want to make it better. While everyone knows about my support and commitment to our school system, in my opinion, we also need to more appropriately... in my opinion, we also need to more appropriately fund town services, find solutions to some almost belated businesses, and increase our tax base while keeping our town as affordable as possible for all of our seniors and other families. To all the town staff, your hard work and expertise will be respected, acknowledged, and the key to our success. To our town manager and town attorney, now more than ever, we need you to offer your unsolicited advice to help us make the best possible decisions. To my fellow councilors, now that the election is over, the hard work begins. Let me end tonight's meeting with an old military saying that I believe is appropriate for each of our town leaders. There are three types of leaders: those who make things happen, those who watch things happen, and those who wonder what happened. Please join me in working to make things happen, to make South Windsor even better. Thank you. Counselor Cordero, I think we're about to set a record. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. We're adjourned.